We have nice pictures displaying. There you go, look at that. And we're up. So let's uh call a Shakopee City Council meeting to order for October 3rd, 2023. I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Delaney.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras is gone. Councilmember Lara.
Here.
Mayor Lehman.
Here. Item number two, stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
At my allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is a special presentation, 3A proclamation of violence, domestic violence awareness month. Staff, want to do a short overview, please?
Mayor, members of council, I'll introduce Kristi Larson, Executive Director for Southern Valley Alliance.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight.
What was the name again?
My name is Kristi Larson.
Kristi Larson?
Yep, I'm the Executive Director at Southern Valley Alliance, and just wanted to come here tonight. It is, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so wanted to share a little bit about Southern Valley Alliance, some updates, and just some really exciting things that we have going on. So for those of you that are not familiar with Southern Valley Alliance, we are the domestic violence service provider for both Scott and Carver Counties. We have been providing these services for the two counties since 1982, so quite a while. We are currently located in Belle Plaine, but not for too much longer. If you have been driving by at all, Fourth and Holmes, we are building a brand-new facility right on the corner there. And so, starting in 2024, right away in January, we will be offering our services here in Shakopee. So we are really excited to make Shakopee our home. We will no longer be in Belle Plaine. And so excited to be your neighbors and right across from the government center as well. So over the last 41 years, Southern Valley Alliance has provided domestic violence services to over 24,000 individuals in our two counties. Over 5,600 of those individuals were residents of Shakopee. So while we like to think that domestic violence doesn't happen in our neighborhood, it happens in every single community and impacts many, many residents of every community. So thank you for having me here tonight, especially during October, which is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It's just a really great time to recognize survivors and talk about our services that are available to community residents. So Southern Valley Alliance has a 24/7 crisis line that is available to anyone to call. It's free, confidential. People can call if they're in a crisis situation, or maybe it's a family, friend, that's just looking for some resources or needs to talk through a situation about how they can help out someone that might be in a domestic violence situation. Again, that's free and confidential, so we encourage anyone to call that at any time, and it will be answered by a trained advocate. We also hold two support groups each week. One of those is a virtual support group. The second one is here in Scott County as an in-person support group. So those go on weekly, and people are, they're open support groups, so we just ask that people call our office, and then we can get them connected to those different support groups. We have law enforcement partnerships. We really appreciate our partnership with the Shakopee Police Department. So every time they are out on a domestic violence call, they're filling out a report that they then send to Southern Valley Alliance, and we are able to follow up with the victims in that situation and provide them the resources and referrals that they need. We also provide court advocacy, so we're going to court with our victims, not providing legal services, but providing that emotional support piece, and also the guidance about the court process. So a lot of times that's for harassment restraining orders or orders for protection, and we have an advocate that will go with them for their entire court process. We do medical advocacy with St. Francis Hospital. So if somebody is going into the emergency department presenting with domestic violence injuries, we can do a telehealth appointment while they are in the emergency department and be there for that emotional support piece, and also to set up an appointment to come meet with our advocates after that. This spring, we actually just started a transitional housing program. So we have six scattered site apartments throughout the two counties, where we are housing families for up to 12 months. During that time, they're receiving not only support with their rent and utilities, but intensive case management to really help them gain the skills and education. So upon exit of the program, they are self-sufficient and just stable and ready to have their own housing. And finally, we do a lot of community education and outreach, like we are here tonight. We also do it in our schools. We are in Shakopee Public Schools, providing information about healthy relationships, teen dating violence, and just resources in the community. So those are a little bit of the services that we have at Southern Valley Alliance. And as I mentioned, we are just really excited for our new facility. You can learn more on our website about the progress and how the building is coming along, but planning to finish up the construction at the end of November, moving in December from Belle Plaine to here, and commencing our services here in Shakopee right away in 2024.
Excellent. Thank you. So for information on your services, they can find that on the website?
Yep, it's just S V A M N dot org.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for all I let you do for this cause. Great, great work, great cause. Mr. Whiting?
So you mentioned the call center and the support groups. That's all going to be at the facility on 3rd Avenue? All those things are kind of run through that home office kind of thing?
Yes. Yep.
Well, great. Welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Like, again, I could thank you for all your organization does. This is an important topic. Unfortunately, it is needed. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Lara?
I'd just like to concur with them about the services that you provide that are necessary and vital to our communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
So what's the wishes of council? Mr. Whiting?
Mayor, I'd like to adopt a proclamation of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and have that read into the record, please.
Is there a second? Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Counselor Delaney. And before we vote on this, let me read this official proclamation. Get my bifocals going here. Proclamation of the City of Shakopee declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas, in the City of Shakopee, in recognition of the critical work being done by domestic violence advocates and service to the survivors and victims they serve, all residents are encouraged to actively engage in the work and events sponsored by Southern Valley Alliance and other organizations working toward the elimination of domestic violence. And whereas more than 10 million adults experience domestic violence and over 1.5 million high school students are physically abused by dating partners annually in the United States. And whereas more than 23,000 calls are placed to domestic violence hotlines nationwide every day, and whereas calls to our local domestic abuse crisis line, Southern Valley Alliance more has, have more than doubled in the last two years. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is felt not only by individuals and families, but communities and the nation as a whole. And whereas Shakopee joins with others across the state of Minnesota and nationwide in supporting domestic violence victims and survivors, the advocates and organizations who serve them in holding offenders accountable. Now therefore, be it resolved that the members of the City Council of the City of Shakopee hereby do proclaim October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, adopting a regular session of the City Council, City of Shakopee, Minnesota, held the third day of October 2023, and I will sign this if it is passed. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number four, approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to our agenda from staff or council? Mr. Delaney?
Is this the time to, or is that the next?
This is the agenda.
Sorry, I'm tired of myself here.
Okay.
No changes.
Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Lara. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number five, consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are going to be approved in one motion. Any changes to the consent agenda by council? Mr. Delaney?
I'd like to pull 5A2, 2024-2028 Capital Improvement Plan off the consent agenda.
5A2? That what you said?
Yes.
Okay. Any other changes? Any other changes? Wishes of council, Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as modified.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Counselor Whiting, seconded by Counselor Lara. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Acting Administrator Tate, can you please read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, these are the consent agenda items for Tuesday, October 3rd. 5A1, approve city council minutes. 5A3 adopts resolution 2023-104, declaring the amount to be assessed, ordering the preparation of proposed assessments, and sets the public hearing date for delinquent ordinance services. 5A4 adopts resolution 2023-114, accepting the Minnesota Department of Public Safety's Towards Zero Death Grant Award. 5B1 adopts resolution 2023-111, awarding the contract for 101 and Shenandoah Drive Traffic Signal Improvements. 5B2 approves construction cooperative agreement for County Road 16 Trail Improvements. 5B3 adopts resolution 2023-112, closing out the Jennifer Lane Park Project. 5B4 approves professional services agreement for the Boiling Springs Drainage Improvement Project. 5B5 adopts resolution 2023-113, awarding the contract for County Road 78 Underpass Improvements. 5B6 approves an XL Energy Encroachment Agreement Amendment. 5C1 approves a temporary liquor license for the Spooky Family Fun Event. 5D1 adopts resolution 2023-115, setting a public hearing for the Opus MVW Platt. And 5E1 approves the 2023-24 Sidewalk and Snow Removal Locations.
All right, last call. Any discussion on the motion in a second? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That will take us to item number six, recognition of citizens, involved citizens, residents by the city council. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the city council on a matter that is not on the agenda, now would be that time. If you're, if you have an item you'd like to discuss with council that is not on our agenda, now would be the time to step up to the table here and, and address us. You're more than welcome. Anybody? Last call, seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven.
Is there any correspondence?
Uh, let's see. Anybody have anything from residents? I've, you know, I've received a couple that I've passed on to staff, so. Normal question stuff. Item number seven, business removed from consent. Item 5A2 was removed by Councilmember Delaney. Councilmember Delaney, you have the floor.
Yeah, my, my concern with our, our current plan is um we, looks like we're, we're kind of overextending ourselves. Specifically, I look at the park and rec. I mean, I love parks and rec. And I think we have great green space, but I look at some of these projects, and I'm wondering if we're, if we're doing more than we, we can afford to do at this time. And I'm wondering if we can scale it back. I mean, I, I think, again, we have great parks, and I look at some of these projects, and I, they are lofty. You know, some of the things that they're tied to, like our, our riverbank stabilization, that's a, that's a need. Then I look at some of the things we're trying to do with concession stands and, and riverfront marinas, and that's more of a want. I understand somebody will come back and say, well, this is, it's going to come out of our park development fund. But then if I look a couple of years down the road, our park development fund is going negative. So that, that's my concern at the present time.
Mr. Whiting?
Thank you. As far as some of the ones that you've pointed out, some of those have requirements because there was a land shift and a requirement to us to make that a park development. Part of that also goes along with some of that cultural corridor eventually being, that's kind of our city foothold in that area. These park projects are always expensive. They've been on the books for years. This one's been kicked back several times, and they are expensive. Some of these projects, we also have talked about the fact of the funding that you mentioned. So we know that those funds get replenished too. So I understand where you're coming from. I also understand that this particular area needs what we're putting into it.
Anybody else? I'll chime in. I'll chime in. Councilmember Delaney, I, I concur with you on some of your concerns. I had the same concerns. We, we've had this discussion as a council. You know, and I'm looking just past the amount that it's going to cost for the initial improvements because we take that dollar amount and then we start, we charge taxpayers basically, and we start putting away park asset fund dollars out of the tax levy to shore it up for when these improvements need to be redone in a future time when the redoing of something is not eligible for the park reserve fund. It's, it comes out of park asset, which is taxpayer funds. Not to mention the additional operational cost of some of these. You know, you know, we try to scale, and we, we asked councils if we could scale it down just a little bit, not get rid of any of these plans, because, you know, some of them are pretty cool. They're just too expensive. And there just wasn't a wherewithal to do that, so this is where we're at, is what it is.
I did think of one other thing.
Mr. Lara?
Yeah, are we, are, are the concerns over the whole entire time length of 2024 through 2028, are we talking, are we looking at just 2024? Because there's a list of them. I'm looking at both, 2024, but also you got to look at your future plans. You're, you got to get the money from somewhere. Sure.
On the, on the other side, you know, we're adopting, this is the plan. Doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen. You know, you kind of look at each individual
Each individual.
project as it comes forward. Do you have the funds to do this? Is there support to do this? So on and so forth. You know, it would be nice to have a more scaled down going into it because, you know, the chances of, you know, you just don't know. Rest assured, there's some of these projects that I, I won't be supporting in their current format because they're just too lofty. I, so I agree with you. But that's, that's just my own personal opinion, and ultimately what happens within this body is the majority decides that, and that, and that is what it is. I totally respect that. Mr. Lara, and then Mr. Whiting?
Sure. So I agree with you, Mayor, that you, where you're saying that this is just like a plan, it's an outline. I feel like the numbers are maybe just placeholders, and it doesn't necessarily mean we all have to agree with them. But, because they will come back, like you said, they will come back to us for approval, and there could be revisions at that time. There's, there's opportunities when they get presented where we can make changes at that time. So I, I'm not going to get, I'm not going to get 100% hung up on the dollars, dollar amounts just because we know we can make changes. I'm not going to disagree that, you know, these prices are, they, they look high. But I do, I will agree that these will come back to us, and we can discuss them further as each project lands on our agenda.
Mr. Whiting?
Thank you. As you mentioned, this is the overarching plan. And each one, each individual project comes back with all of its scope, and all of its numbers, and all of its engineering, and all of that goes along with it. If we don't come in with this plan, this is part of our, you know, 10-year plan in the end, because we went from five to 10. But this is what we need for, for next year, so. But each individual project comes. So you need to come in with the scope, the plan. And I think we've done that. We've had the discussions. We've talked through each individual item all through the summer. Now we come to this, and we're moving forward.
Mr. Delaney?
Well, historically, has there ever been a SIP plan that had a considerable project that has come back in where it's been devalued? Price drop, kind of pulled apart, or is this more of a, you said it's a placeholder, but if it, if we're not making changes to it to either reduce the scope or reduce the budget or get a lower cost and still get good value out of it, then it's, it's kind of, I wouldn't say empty numbers. We're just putting it on the page, saying we're going to vote on it and set our budget, and then as it comes up, we keep saying we're going to make changes. But I have yet to see a project that has been considerably made changes to at, at current time.
That's not true.
I
Give an example.
Go ahead, Mr. Whiting.
We wanted to put a big shelter at Quarry Park. While the numbers didn't jive, it was going to cost too much because of the footings. So we pulled that out, and we changed a lot of the things from the plan. Quarry Lake looks nothing like the original plan.
I've been around for 20-plus years, and I've seen both. I've seen some projects not be moving forward. I've seen many projects come forward more expensive than what's listed here. You know, and a lot of that, you know, we're, this is a best guess estimate that staff has put together. You know, they're probably using today's numbers with a little bit of an inflator for whenever it's scheduled into the plan. But there's so many things that, that are out of our control that drive that. What's the price of asphalt that particular building time, or concrete, or what's the labor markets? You know, if the economy's running strong, now you have a, it's hard to get the labor lined up. So a lot of times it's, it's ebbs and flows, and, you know, it ultimately comes down to three members of five deciding what's going to happen with each one of these projects. Now, you know, this could potentially be a tie vote, which would fail to adopt this. But I know that there's three members of council that have already spoken in support of this. So I, you, you know, it's kind of futile to, for me to hold this up, just to bring it back to adopt it when our, our other councilmembers hear, because they showed support for it. But I will say that I have them same concerns, and as each one of these projects come forward that I have, and I've stated them concerns very publicly at council meetings. We all know what they are. I will continue to do that, and if, if we can't get a rain on things, I'll vote against them projects. So it is what it is. That's how our government, our free government works in this country, unlike others. Where if you disagree, they take you all back, and bad things happen to you. What's the wishes of the council?
Make a motion to approve the 2024 to 2028 Capital Improvement Plan.
I'll second.
There's a motion in the second. Staff, have any comments?
Well, just, just a general comment. I mean, and great, Mayor and councilmember, great, great discussion. I think the one thing to consider, as we've talked about before, is, I'm trying to move one slide if I can. If not, that's not a big deal, is that it, this is just a, a plan. It's, it's non-binding. You're making a, a motion to approve the plan, but any one of these projects, you can alter, you can push back, you can decide not to do. They're all going to come back to you. You'll, you'll be able to make that decision at that point in time. Now, 2024 projects are the ones that we would include within our budget, so they'll be included in the budget. So you will see those back in 2024 unless, for whatever reason, the timing gets pushed back. But once again, you'll have the chance to modify those projects. The other thing to consider is, is some of these projects that are past 20, well, they're all between 25 and 2028. I mean, they're mere placeholders at this point in time. Some of these projects haven't gone, even gone through the design phase, or there's still more effort that needs to, to go into these projects. So if that helps your consideration when, when making a motion.
Can you, I didn't bring my book with. Can you go over the 24 projects? Because looking at this total expenditure by fund for 2024, park development is almost 12 million. Tax increment is, is 8 million. Pardon me?
There you go. So this, this would be the total, the total amounts of the projects, obviously, within each fund. There's individual projects. Within the Capital Improvement Plan, which you have received, it's, it's within the council packet. It does list out each of the individual projects, but there's, what, 36.8 million slated for 2024? Then I should mention, once this CIP is adopted, we will put it on our website. Each of these projects have, you know, a picture, specific details on all the projects, and it also has the, they're basically the project lead. So if there are further questions on, you know, from staff, councilmembers, public, they have a contact to, to reach out to.
So do we know what the 9.6 million in '24 is going to be spent on, and the 7.5 million in TIF increment is being spent on?
Yeah, so that's everything that's included within the, the tax increment plan. So that would, you know, what's shown on, on this fund here would be all the internal
You don't have the individual projects handy?
I, I mean, I can.
So Mayor and Council, they are the roundabout on Eagle Creek, that's one. And then the developers responsible for paying for it, but the other are the internal service roads that will serve the amphitheater. If you remember, there's a loop road and then an internal road. Those are all the responsibility of the amphitheater. But they, to answer one of your questions, a lot of these projects are required to be in our CIP for us to be able to fund them, even if the private developer is paying for them. Same is true on the park. When we go for grants, the first question they ask, is the project included in your capital improvement program?
So, and, okay, so the, the TIF one is, I got that one now. That's going to include that parking lot for the amphitheater. That's going to be a, a public shared use. The 9.6 for park development fund, 2024.
So Riverfront Marina is 1.8 million. We have a $350,000 grant from the state on that. Trail Wayfinding is 100,000. Lyons Park Renovations, 565,000. Quarry Lake is 100,000. That's for the last piece. As the Vice Mayor mentioned, we removed all of, there was originally a $5.2 million shelter planned. We're now doing a $100,000 picnic shelter. The West End Dog Park is $350,000, but that's coming from the private developer of the apartment building there. scenic Heights Master Plan, 700,000. That's for the pickleball courts in scenic heights. Clarny Hills Park Improvements is 650,000. That's being paid for by the new apartment building that's under construction. That park has no improvements currently. The Windermere Bluff Regional Corridor, that's if the land comes on the market. That's 1.25 million. That's to purchase the last piece from the Bregman family. Riverbank Stabilization, so that is a combination of federal and state money. So it's $1 million in 2024 to start the design work. You can see in later years, it's 1.5 million and then 14 million. County Road Underpass, you approved tonight. The purchase of that piece of concrete to complete that, that'll be the underpass between the two phases of Windermere. Culture Corridor is 2.2 million. Again, that's a placeholder we have in Again, that's a placeholder. We haven't seen the final plans. There's a $750,000 grant from the federal government that we have to match for 750,000. Valley Crest Parks, 900,000. That's the empty parkland we were given, eight acres at Valley Crest, along with all of the park dedication money to build that park out. Park Meadows Trail from Valley Crest, that project's been in the works for at least 10 years. That's a trail to connect Valley Crest over to Park Meadows. And Highview Park, that's to begin the design and infrastructure work for a future park in 2025 that is a joint powers agreement between Jackson Township and the city of Shakopee.
Kurski there, and maybe this is a finance question, but on the total CIP expenditures by fund and then funding source summary, if I compare the two, the total expenditure in a park development fund is 11.5 million for '24. And the funding summary source on the following page is 9.6 from the park development fund. So there's roughly $2 million difference there and I'm assuming a lot of that is either grant dollars or developer.
So, so mayor, a million dollars of that's the state bonding funding to pay for the design work for the Riverbank stabilization.
Yep.
And then there's $750,000 in MINDAT, federal cost sharing for some of the projects. There's 140,000 in grants and I think, I believe another park asset internal service fund transfer, $40,000.
Okay.
And that $9 million is currently in the bank. So that's, for instance, on Valley Crest, they paid, they're almost done with that subdivision. So they've been paying over the years. We've been accumulating that money. I think when I came to the vice mayor's point, we would collect money for project A in neighborhood A and go do project D in somewhere else. And so the neighborhoods were not getting their parks, some neighborhoods, neighborhoods had to wait five to 10 years for they get their parks developed. Council took a position during the park planning process that we would expedite. If those people were paying money into park dedication, we would try and do those parks in that neighborhood and not leave basically weeds for five to 10 years.
And it's, if I may.
Go ahead.
It's much more difficult to put that park in. I know one, we had planned our baseball league around it and had ballparks. And then the neighborhood said, we don't want ballparks. Well, understandable, but.
They got used to using it for their own use.
Yeah, but you know, we have plans, but, and I don't mean to, we don't want to forest fit a park either, but we want to make sure we get them in with the development, with trails, especially trails.
Yeah. And mayor and council, I think the other big push we've made from a staff standpoint is we do a years with outreach. So Clarny Hills, for instance, they're going to start that outreach over the winter. We're working with the city attorney on the joint powers agreement for the park on the Jackson Township land. And we just have a concept plan, but we've told them, we're, as those houses get built, as that neighborhood gets built, those people that are going to live there who are paying for that park dedication get some input into what that park's going to look like. We didn't do that in the past and that was a change right after the park master plan where we had an extensive outreach program.
Time from a development coming in place and actually getting the park in place. I mean, what kind of.
Councilor, I can't hear a word you're saying.
So when a development starts, what's the lag time for having a park and the trails and everything in place?
So Windermere is a really good example. That's, that subdivision started when I started seven years ago. The first kind of major park is under construction right now. That's not really the way we like to do it because of most of the feedback from the neighbors, like, when are we going to get our park? I moved in, I was told there was going to be a park. We try. Valley Crest is a good example, so that's probably 70% built out today. It'll be built out by the end of next year and we will have neighborhood meetings there over the winter and the spring to get the final design nailed down and then we'll bring that project back to you.
Any other, Mr. Lara?
Mr. Kurski, on the Windermere Bluff Regional Corridor, the 1.25 million dollars, you said, so is that, you said if and when that land is acquired?
So mayor and council, one family owns most of the land in that area. And so as part of their park dedication fees, the developers, they would give us that money and then we would buy the remaining bluff land. We already own, through D.R. Horton and through Randy Kupich's project, we've already acquired the bluff. Part of the master plan for that area, three or four years ago, was to have a regional kind of corridor through there for nature trails and for wildlife. There's a number of protected species in that area. So that'll be a preserved area, but we're not going to buy that today if we don't know there's a development going ahead. Because what happens is, we have to have it in our CIP. So if they come next year and say, all right, we've reached an agreement with the developers, they're going to pay you all this park dedication, but we need you to buy that land. We would have that in our CIP. But we won't do that until we know there's a development moving forward.
And, and just procedurally, when a development comes online, under the state statute, legal can correct me if I'm wrong, the city can either accept a percentage of the land, I think it's 10% of the land, or, or the cash in lieu of the land at the same value. So in this case, I would assume when that piece would come online, the city is going to show the master plan that says, we kind of have a plan here. It's already mostly started, but this is going to fit in this piece. And they would acquire that property as, accept that property under the park dedication statute requirement in lieu of cash. And if it's not the total amount of land as the statute requires, then there would be a smaller cash donation above the land. Is that a correct statement?
Sort of. I mean, I think the issue we're going to have, there's one family who will be selling all that land and they don't necessarily want to, they're not benefiting from the gifting of that land to the city. But the private developers as part of their development agreement then could either give us that land or give us park dedication to buy it from that family.
Which is a requirement under state statute. Any other questions? So I'm trying to get over my dilemma of approving a couple of items in this that I don't agree with, even though I can then again vote against them when they do come forward separately. Or, or voting against this now and having it approved at the next meeting. So we already have a motion made by councillor Whiting and seconded by councillor Lara.
Well, what do you.
Are you calling the question? More question, question's been called, so there's no more debate and discussion on the motion. Is that correct? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails.
Are they calling the question?
Now we're to the motion. What do we want to do?
The motion's been made and seconded.
Okay. Mr. Lara, you had something to say before the question was called?
Yeah, but I mean, I thought we weren't able to, I thought it was, we're not discussing anymore.
The motion to call a question has failed.
Oh, I just.
So we have a motion with a second on the table right now.
I guess my question is, you said there was a couple of projects that you were not, you were questioning? I'm just curious.
Well, as I said in the past, I think we're spending too much money on the marina and too much money on the culture corridor. I think it's going to get vandalized. It's not in a very supervised area. I think we could get a bigger bang for the dollar for a lot less. It's just my two cents. And you know what? I don't, it's not the first time I've been in a minority, so it's okay.
Are we going to be presented options for it?
We have been presented many options and the bridge across the channel was in one of them options. Hopefully it's not in there because that'd be the second most expensive bridge in the state of Minnesota. That's being eliminated for a cost savings. But there's other questions, like, you know, if we're going to have kayaks working out of the marina, is that a private entity's expense or is it the city's? And that would come along with the project, I would imagine.
We presented to the DNR to get that grant, basically it would be, we have a concept from a private kayak contractor that we'll bring forward later to probably test it at Quarry Lake to see how, whether people use it or not. But the kayak project at the marina is to not only dredge out the marina, but to also do an adaptive ramp there for people with disabilities. That was one of the things DNR wanted, is people be able to get in there and then get out at the Three Rivers Park District.
Is the grant going to cover that cost?
Yes.
Completely?
Yes.
Okay.
My questions are satisfied.
Have we received that grant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions, staff?
Just, just a comment that a lot of this stuff is tied to money we already have. Already been granted through federal, state, other groups that have put money in. Now, they are matching grants, so we'd be throwing away free money here.
There's one, there's a difference between matching the grant and, and spending five times what the grant amount is.
We're not there yet. This is the CIP. We've discussed this.
I get it.
This is the overarching plan. We get to each plan individually.
Mr. Delaney.
I'm just going to comment that, I mean, once it's built, then the burden of, of maintaining it falls to the residents.
This is the plan. It's not the built.
Okay. Moving on, we have a motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Lara to approve the 24 to 28 capital improvement plan. And sensing there's no more discussion and we're ready to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I'm sorry, what were.
The original motion to adopt the CIP. Yeah or nay?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes three to one. And as I said, individual projects I will be voting against. All right. Where does that take us to? Item number eight, recess to economic development meeting. Motion to recess to the economic development authority meeting would be in order.
I'll make a motion to recess to the EDA meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lara, seconded by Mr. Delaney. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned to EDA. Mr. President.
Thank you. I'll be standing in for President Contreras as she is absent this evening as vice, vice chair. So let's call the October 3rd meeting of the Shakopee Economic Development Authority to order, please. We'll start with a, please make note of the role. And I'll ask for an approval of the agenda. Mr. Lehman.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? Seconded by Lara. Any discussion? Discussion, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Next on our agenda is the consent business, item three. What's the wishes of the group?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent business.
We have a motion, a second by Delaney for the consent business, which contains the EDA minutes and a declaration of TIF number 10, River City Center, item 3B. Any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, item number 3B, decertification of River City Center has been long coming. Good to see that happening.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Consent business, any opposed? Consent business passes unanimously. General business, for today's general business, we have nothing. So we're down to reports and have the EDA bill list. Anybody have any questions on the EDA bill list?
No questions.
All right. Well, that was quick.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, October 17th at 7:00 PM, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Lara, a second by Delaney for adjournment to October 17th at 7:00 PM. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
Call the Shakopee City Council meeting back to order and that may have been a record, Mr. Whiting.
Could be close.
Let's see here. That brings us to item number 11A, city bill list. Any questions on the city bill list?
No questions for me.
Okay. 11B, liaison administration reports. I can't remember which side we. Start over here?
Back on this side, okay. Go down my list here. As far as the SPUC reporting, we did have a, our meeting yesterday. AMI is going in. Everybody knows that's remote monitoring your water, electricity. So that will be going in. Canterbury will be the first, I guess, test case for all, everything. As far as that backflow prevention, there's a 50% compliance at this point. Second notices went out. Again, this is more education this year. And then there was discussion, I think we came before council, EDA Eagle Creek Power Line Underground, where I think EDA is paying 150K toward that, for a total cost of 350. I think that's already come through the council. Let's see, as far as community outreach, met with Representative Tapke. We had a, this great conversation about the city and what just happened in the legislature. Also attended a new citizens swearing-in ceremony. 91 countries represented. I forgot the number of Minnesotans that were there. It was definitely north of 600. Really interesting, really good event to go to.
Can you get in a microphone, please?
Sorry. Really good event to go to. So if you ever get a chance to go to a citizen, new citizens swearing-in, definitely do. It's a really, really good sight to see. As far as 169, nothing there, but there is a, the Met Council's having a, a, what they're calling a public comments, where they're going to amend their region's long-range transportation policy ban. I didn't know if this is a good time to bring this up as far as 169 coalition or wait till other business. And they're looking for, I guess, public comment. And I was, didn't know if I needed to come before the body here before I do a public comment as far as the city council in support of their, their plan. Part of that plan would include the amendment to corridor 13, going from bridge, our ferry bridge road up through 35. Pretty much they're going to pull the stoplights through there. That'd be the, the key thing for us. I think that would definitely improve transportation for, for our city. And that is it as far as all liaison.
Let's, let's address the question on the 16, the Met Council comment under other business. Mr. Whiting?
I was going to suggest if it is something that we have, just run it through staff and they could email it out to us to, if it's, if it's long or something you want to disseminate.
I'll, I'm going to address it under other business.
Okay, yep. All right. So I, on September 28th, I attended the Chamber, Chamber Visitors Bureau meeting. A lot of information. So the chamber has some data collection for, there are different events and each chamber member has access to this data. And they can tell you who spent the most money and, and what different demographic. And surprised me, who spent the most money in age group in Shakopee last year? Who? It might have been last month, but it was probably. It was ages over 65 and you would never pick that, you know, as, who spent the most money in Shakopee over 65? I would have never picked that.
These are chamber events, not just in general, right?
Well, no, these are chamber events, but it's, it's talking about who's coming in and out of the, the community for, to places like Canterbury and using the different city and hotels and things.
Okay.
And I think you're talking about, that's money from outside. They're tracking, they're not.
Right.
It's not just people that live in Shakopee going to these events. They're, they're geo-tracking people coming into our city, spending money, so that age group is coming here.
I think they can actually split it up.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Very intriguing.
You can look at and dive into the information. If you're a chamber member, just talk to the chamber and get into that. But very interesting stuff. Some of the chamber events, if you happen to make it down to the Shakopee Food Truck Festival down at the Landing, I got, happened to be there. That was a great event last weekend, sponsored by the Chamber. Shaco, Shaco Lantern Festival, October 7th in downtown Shakopee. Wake Up with Shakopee, October 24th at the Star Choice Credit Union. Downtown Shakopee Trick or Treat, October 28th. That's the downtown businesses are doing that. Student Career Expo, November 3rd at the Shakopee High School. The Inspire Shakopee Chambers Women's Series is November 14th at Hosanna Church. And the Legislative Luncheon, November 16th at the Hampton Inn. And Holiday Fest, put that on your calendars for December 2nd in downtown Shakopee. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lara?
Didn't have any liaison activities, but did attend the Chambers Food Truck Festival at the Landing on the 30th. Great weather, great to see. It was very busy, so very great participation and look forward to hopefully having them hosted again next year, so.
September 28th, met with Scott County Administration, Commissioner Breckie and Commissioner Brennan, city administrator Bill Reynolds. Normal quarterly get-together, general topics. 29th, photo op at the Brew Hall. The Brew Master gave me a in-depth tour of the operation and I got to say, it was, I didn't realize how much goes into it, but it's, it was kind of cool actually with the barley, the hops, the, all the stuff that goes into it. So kudos to them, even though I don't drink, but. drink, but, uh, sure brought back the drinking days memories, I'll tell you.
You can be a brewmaster and keep the profits, maybe.
I was able to pick out all four different kind, exactly what they were, just off the looks. So he said I knew my beer. I, at one time, I really did, so, um, what else did I have? Uh, I think I'll just stop there, and we'll go on to other bi-, uh, administration report.
Nothing from me, mayor.
Thank you, sir. Other business, and under other business, I did want to touch on Council Member Delaney's comments about the Met Council. I actually have been in communication with City Administrator Bill Reynolds on this topic, along with, uh, County Commissioner Brennan. Um, basically, the Met Council is least solicitate, soliciting comments on an amendment to their transportation plan. Uh, in that amendment is two projects that are included, one sixty-nine fifty-nine, um, right out here by the, uh, company that makes them, uh, uh, outdoor, um, chairs and tables by the, I think, yeah. Out in that neck of the woods on one sixty-nine, and, uh, the other project was a thirteen corridor from, uh, one sixty-nine to Nicollet Avenue, um, to getting rid of the at-grade crossings and stuff. Both of these projects are projects that this city council unanimously have supported multiple times over the last couple of years. Um, uh, when I was on the one sixty-nine corridor colla-, and the one sixty-nine corridor coalition supports it, Scott County obviously supports it. Uh, I asked Mr. Reynolds to put together a council memo, or, or a, a letter from council for the, for that Met Council feedback. He said absolutely, because, uh, you know, this council has overwhelmingly supported them projects in the past, so if there's anybody that has a disagreement on that at this point, uh, that would be the time to say that, but...
No, continue to support that letter. If you need a timely letter, I would support that.
Yeah. So that's the plan with that. Um, Mr. Delaney, you are the, uh, council-appointed representative to Shakopee on the one sixty-nine corridor coalition. You are certainly welcome to, if the coalition is, supports that position, you can represent their position, absolutely. Um, and you might even want to tell them, once the letter is drafted from staff, that, uh, the city council supports it too. So I've, uh, been in contact with the Met Council with support of that also, because, uh, council has adopted it multiple times, so, um...
If I may, uh, the, the, they usually give you a boilerplate letter, and I don't recommend those, uh, I think if we do something...
Our staff is going to draft it.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay. Uh, the other things I'd bring up is the Pad Bridge opening, October seventeenth, eight AM, and October twenty-first, we have the cleanup day. I think you covered the spooky world stuff? Pardon me?
I believe that the cleanup day is the twenty-second. I've been seeing it flashing on the screen.
Look at the calendar here. It was on a Saturday, I believe, and then this calendar says October twenty-first is a Saturday, and this says twenty-three.
Good catch.
So...
At a quarter hour.
Which one is wrong? It's our, our Public Works folk. Bill is twenty-first, Saturday, correct? What time? Seven-thirty to eleven-thirty. Get in line. There's information on the website of what can be, uh, taken and how, what order to pack it, so that your route through the, through the line will go much quicker, so. Any other business from council?
Uh, no, sir. I will make a, make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Delaney, council ma-, uh, motion made by Councilmember Lara, seconded by Councilmember Delaney. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn. Motion passes.
Oh, yeah, that's good. Appreciate that. That's good news, yeah.